Call order, the regular meeting of the Ashland Board of Commissioners. You all will stand for the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day in Ashland, Kentucky. We ask that you preside over our meeting today of our mayor and city commissioners. Help us to make the right decisions on our city on behalf of our citizens. We ask you for your wisdom and guidance today and in the days ahead. Be with our city manager, our staff, our employees, and our citizens. Be with those that attend us today. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to make a motion or anybody to make a motion to receive and file the agenda?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive and file the minutes of our regular meeting from February 28th?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're off to mayor and commissioners' comments. I'll just quickly say that I am acting on behalf of Mayor Gilmore. He's out today, so pardon me if I've made mistakes. We don't do this very often, but I want to welcome everybody here today. We are finally experiencing a little bit of spring. And I think it's much to my favor. I was on the truck yesterday moving furniture in my regular job, and it was much better yesterday than it has been moving furniture in the snow. I do want to make a couple of comments real quick. You'll hear them later. We have upcoming our repair fair, and we need both volunteers and projects. This year's repair fair will be held on May 18th, and I think we've got applications up here if anybody would like to take some. Also want to make note and thank, I know Commissioner Clark and I are very grateful to our finance department and our transportation department for the extended hours and days for our bus service.
Thank you.
This is going to be wonderful for our citizens, and we've already received a lot of positive feedback. I want to thank you all for your hard work on that. With that, I'll turn it over to our fellow commissioners.
I feel I want to tag on to that. Again, thank you for that. I know we've been asking for those extended hours for a while. I hope that that Saturday round works out, and I hope that we can get past the one Saturday month. I think the first Saturday month is really a great place to start, you know, being grocery shopping and everything in the first of the month. I think that's a good idea. And so again, thank you so much for that. I had the opportunity this morning to spend a little bit of time at the Healthy Choices, Healthy Communities Coalition event this morning, Bridges Out of Addiction. And I didn't get to stay as long as I wanted to stay. But I did get to listen to Chief Jan Raider from Huntington, and she put on a very good presentation about how Huntington has worked through some of the opioid epidemic and the things that they have done and seen some success with. So that was really interesting. The main point of her discussion, a lot of it, and she was there and he could probably attest to this, was a lot of how those things affect our first responders and how we as the leadership need to recognize that. And so I'm going to be sending you guys some information that she passed out because I thought it was really interesting how Huntington has tackled some of those things. So I'll share that with you later on today. I think that's all I have.
I just want to welcome everybody to today. Just a few comments. I received an email from Sean Murray, and I'm going to ask him to give us an update on Central Park. This is a good time of Central Park. You see a lot of green coming up and a lot of activities. And Sean, can you give us an update?
Sure. I apologize in advance. I did bring my notes with me today, but real briefly, I deal with it every day. So what we're working with is the parks, recreation staff have been busy getting the ballfields prepared. Practices have started for all the little leagues. The scheduling, the game schedules are going in. We have the nets back up at the tennis courts for both tennis and pickleball. And some of the opportunities that we are currently looking at is development of the wheelchair access pad that's going to go on the new playground that the commission was kind enough to fund for us last year and is being used quite extensively at this point. That's one of the projects we're looking at. Another one is kind of doing some refurbishment to the water feature that you see at the library commons. And what we'd like to do is make it into a splash pad. Originally, a water feature was determined so everybody could take a look at it, you know, run their hands through it. But what we found is that the children of the community were the best advisors for us on this one, and they said, you know what? This is a splash pad. So we're adapting to that and doing the best we can to provide that for them. And hopefully, we hope to have that implemented prior to July 1st this year. Those are a couple things we're working on.
Very good. Very good. I just have a couple more. Promenade up at the dressing room. I don't know, prom is a very expensive time. I know some of you guys know what I'm talking about. They wear the dress for a couple hours, and that's it. Well, they have hundreds of dresses at the dressing room for people that are can't afford, you know, who are hard pressed to afford prom, and a lot of people are. And they're going to have that this weekend and Saturday, Sunday. There's hundreds of prom dresses, also suits for guys. And so that's going to be on Saturday and Sunday. Just a brief warning, and so this is a warning, this is a temporary bad thing and a permanent good thing. I frequent Chick-fil-A, okay? Can't you tell? And so Chick-fil-A, I talked with the manager up there, and they are going to be shut down on April 18th till June 6th. And so stock up on your Chick-fil-A right now. It's going to be a completely redo, completely, a complete redo on the whole store. There's going to be two lanes, covered lanes, because 60% of their business is drive-through. And they said, we can, with these two lanes of drive-through, we could solve the bottleneck coming off that river hill up there. And so two lanes of overhead drive-through with heaters and fans for their staff. Completely new kitchen, a new dining room. And so from April 18th to June 6th, no Chick-fil-A unless you go somewhere else. But that's a temporary bad thing, but a permanent good thing because it's going to be able to accommodate more people, and it's one of our most attended restaurants. That's all I have.
Say, Andrew.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one thing. I meant to highlight this a couple of weeks ago. I think it's already been done by the mayor and commissioners for recognition from the finance department for the popular annual financial report. This is published online. But to give a little other background, it's not something that is a requirement to do, but the finance department for years has been doing the popular annual financial report, which is derived from the comprehensive annual financial report. They also produce a budget report. For all three of these, the city receives certificates of achievement for excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association. I think it's been at least six years in all categories and a little bit longer in some of the others. So I wanted to publicly recognize, which I meant to do two meetings ago, but great job by finance under the leadership of Tony Grove. So who, her, congratulations. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. With that being said, it's now time for public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and press the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to the election issues or concerning personnel disputes will not be allowed. Personal text, obscene, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. The yellow light indicates 30 seconds remaining. A red light means that this time limit has expired. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. Would anybody like to speak at this time?
Mayor and commissioners, I would like to introduce my friends from Ashland Middle School. They've been down the state. I'll talk to Miss--
High school.
I'm sorry. High school. Ashland Blazer High School. And can you, tell us your names.
I'm Hunter Frye.
I'm Eli Thomas.
I'm Ethan Thomas.
And they called me over to the high school, and I met with them. They have been down in the state, talked to Senator Webb and Rocky Atkins and Terry Clark about their project. It is called the Renaissance Project, and they're going to present that for us. It deals with the opioid epidemic and is really cutting edge. And I'm real proud of those guys. They have really put their heart and soul in this, and this will, this is, will help our community out there. Go ahead, guys.
All right, so Renaissance means rebirth. And the whole goal of this is to stop substance abuse, right? Because substance abuse is a very major issue in our local tri-state area. All right, now some of the problem, now some of the ways that we plan on solving this problem is through two things. One, our app Renaissance and our Phoenix Watch. All right, and now some of the functionalities of the app and watch are as such. I don't have a horoscope answer. And a dieting-like system to have videos and educational information to help better educate the user about the kind of drugs that they're going to be using. So you have inspirational videos and stories from them to help get a better understand from the type of people who went through the same exact thing and have came on the other side better. So you have contact information for local rehab centers and also other means of help, right? And how we kind of came about this project is, well, it may recently, my mom passed away of a drug overdose.
Both of my uncles are very heavy into substance abuse, and they have overdosed multiple times in front of their families. And I've actually been assaulted in my own home from someone who was on substance.
Now, one of the functionalities of our Phoenix Watch actually, which is the whole life-saving part, is going to have, like I said, a heart rate sensor, right? Another substance, but the heart rate sensor on it is going to have, it's going to be monitored to you at all times, and it's going to notice if you get from 40 beats or lower, which is considered the danger zone of an overdose, right? And if it notices an irregular heartbeat, it will automatically alert an ambulance, automatically, on its own. Because, I mean, when my mom passed away, they found her on May 4th, and they said that she had been dead for 15 hours. So I believe that if she may have had this, she could still be alive today.
Our target, our target customers are any, are local rehab centers and our local tri-state governments and anyone who is on drugs or needs help.
Our market. We will sell the app on the Google Play Store and the Apple App Store. The watch will be sold at local rehab centers and on our website and also through the local tri-state governments. The Phoenix Watch will be sold for $49.99 because it's estimated $15 to make. If only half the people who overdosed at Huntington alone, which was 72,000 people, got our product, we would have made over $1.2 million in net profit.
And our competition for the watch is Apple, Samsung, and Fitbit. But what makes ours different than theirs and better suited for this kind of thing is because it's specifically made for our app and specifically made for those kind of people. And it's also an affordable price, unlike Apple watches and Fitbits and stuff like that, because Apple watches are like $300, $500. Ours is $49.99. And also, our Phoenix Watch will look like other smart watches to not draw attention to the addicts so they don't get labeled as anything. It will, but it will be different.
Now, some of the milestones that we need to accomplish in order to get our dream up and running, if you guys do help us get it up and running, are as such. We plan on hiring a software developer, which at the moment, we do have a fully functioning working app and watch, and this is a prototype of a watch that we acquired through a Chinese manufacturer, Willem's Qualities and all the kind of aspects that we wanted, made our decision and bought it as a prototype, strictly a prototype at the moment. And, and other things that we need to accomplish is by hiring a manufacturer to help mass produce and produce our watch and also create a website, which we have recently just done at projectrenaissance.net.
As of February last month, we had developed both the watch and app. So by this month, we hope to find funding, hire a software developer, hire our hardware manufacturer, and create a website. So by May, have a fully functioning app and watch, and June, we can finally open up for business online. By October, we hope to mass produce our product and start seeing revenue.
And this right here is some of the pictures we took at the Capitol Tuesday when we were speaking to government officials.
I'm Hunter Frye.
I'm Ethan Thomas.
And I'm Eli Thomas.
And we're from Paul G., Blazer, Ashland High School, and we are Project Renaissance. Now, I'm willing to bet that everyone in this room knows someone, mother, a father, a sister, a brother, someone close to you, a mentor, a guide, or a loved one who is currently battling drug addiction or have even overdosed and died. And the whole idea of this is just to save people's lives. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm very proud of you guys. I really am. Two seniors and a sophomore right there, and they're, they're in a Glock, what was the Glockner competition?
Yeah, Dare to Dream.
Dare to Dream competition. Thank you all very much. You had my support.
Thank you.
I'm afraid I'm going to cry if I speak, and so I've been kind of sitting here quietly. Great job, guys.
Thank you.
That's how you change, well, if you see a problem and you find a solution toward it, then, great job. Thank you.
You're, you're an inspiration to this board, and you're an inspiration to this city, and I want you to know that. Proud of you.
Bernard O'Mann, 2720, Austin, Ashland, Kentucky. I'm actually here to speak in regard to the Young Men's Conference that was held this week, in which one of y'all may have attended, right? Did you attend the Young Men's Conference, sophomore?
I should have.
Oh, you didn't get to attend. All right. He probably, he doesn't need to. He's the one older. But the Young Men's Conference is, this is our third year of doing this, and we have three city officials, which I want to commend. Amanda, this is her third year being one of our presenters. She does a topic which sort of my idea, and her friend Amy Tack got her hooked into this one, but what your mom and dad didn't tell you about girls, so she's kind of--
That's fun with high school boys.
With high school boys, exactly. So Amanda, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, this, I think your second year as presenter, and actually we've got that here. You present from the military perspective toward leadership.
Correct.
Leadership from the US Army perspective. Certainly appreciate Mike doing this. And then Chief Kelly, I think you, is this your third year on the panel? Or your second year?
No, it's the first, first time I've attended as a participant.
All right. Well, and I think Scott Hill, or did Bev get you out there?
Bev and got Ryan Conley out there also.
Okay, and Ryan Conley. So we had additional folks in the city. I've been part of the team committee that set this up three years ago. We were invited to try to replicate the Young Women's Conference until you're the sponsors. So we took it upon ourselves. I see a couple of committee members out in here as well, and other presenters. Vincenzo Prizzola, a committee member as well as presenter, and then Glenn Puet. Glenn is the presenter. But I want to thank you all for working toward this conference and the city supporting it. We have 350 young men from the Bay Co area as well as Southern Ohio attended this. And it's a great conference. I think it does make a difference, and hopefully it inspires some others to do things like this here. I don't know if, if any of us can remember when we were high school, sophomore, most of us were ducesses. And I'm hoping that we can make a difference and keep these guys from doing that. And I want to invite anybody in the community or anybody else from the city that wants to help us in regard to this. Our committee members, we lose folks. We lost Reverend Ike Nicholson. He moved away. We lost Josh Blanton. He moved away. We need some more folks to be on this committee. And you don't have to be a guy to be on the committee. We had Michelle Goodman, Allison Goble, Nicole Griffith Green. Let's see, we've got, we've got Brooke, Caesar, Holly Stone, Chris Spears, Bev Sharp. So in fact, we've got just as many women on it as we do now. But that's how we get things done. I was out there the other day, and we were stuffing our items for the grad bags, and I said, well, let's do it this way. And they looked at me like I was an idiot, and I realized, no, hang on, they know what they're doing, and let's do it your way. So, but I want to thank you all, Amanda, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and talking about the conference, and thanks to you and your committee who protected it.
Your work. Thank you.
Great, great, great.
I can just say, I mean, it was, it was my second year doing that. I do, I know like everybody else appreciates the opportunity, and it is so great to think about, like you said, your terminology, ducesses as sophomore, and I definitely represented that. But to be able to bring things out and to see the genuine absorption of that by those young men, that was fantastic. So, you know, just great job, and thanks for whoever initiated that and the work that goes into continuing that. Thanks.
Would anybody else like to speak at this time? Okay, well, we thank you all for attending. We definitely thank you for your presentation. We're going to go ahead and start with old business. Second reading, sir?
I'd make second reading and adoption ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorize and direct the mayor to execute contract between the City of Ashland BLK Construction LLC for all labor and materials for this lane's concrete and asphalt repair work for up to one year in the amount of $465,070 for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations, Divisions of Waste Water Collection and Water Distribution.
Come on. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'd be second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorize and direct the mayor to execute contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Tri-State Construction and Enterprise LLC in the amount of $58,000, $58.58 for renovations at Safe Harbor of Northeastern Kentucky Building Number Three, resulting in an ADA compliant transitional unit to be paid from Community Development Block Grant Funds for program year 2018 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Salute. Any, all in favor? Any comments? I will make a comment. I am not voting on this matter if I do have a conflict, but my mother is the director of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd see second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance number 87, series of 1992 as previously amended by ordinance number 29, series of 1995, ordinance number 118, series of 2002, and ordinance number 18, series of 2013, which adopted the procurement regulations for the City of Ashland, Kentucky, June 30th, 1992.
Second? Anybody? All in favor? Reading, sorry. All right, go ahead. We got it. It's all done.
All right, and D, second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, requiring the preparation of a fiscal note for any item submitted to the Ashland Board of City Commissioners for approval of the expenditure of city funds either directly or indirectly.
Any comments? Yeah, I think it's been overwhelmingly positive and, and appreciate the newspaper's coverage on this. Do we have, so in this ordinance, the finance department creates the fiscal note. Is that correct? Is that what's correct? That is not correct?
No. When we put together the agenda on the week part of the meeting, so last week, I think the days leading up to Friday, because by ordinance you all directed that, you get a draft agenda on Friday night. So the individual directors will do everything on the RCA, the Request for Commission Action, and the original version of the fiscal note. That goes in. You get that copy on Friday night, so you see what the directors have turned in. On Monday, or over the weekend, in the case of some of our staff, they'll take a look at those. The finance department will make their comments. We'll reconcile that at the staff call on Tuesday for final version that you all see on Friday, or on Tuesday.
Second, this 24 hours with finance reviewing the fiscal note.
It'll give you from COV Tuesday till today. It'll be a little bit over 28 hours.
I'm not comfortable. I think with, that was really not my intent. I thought it was more that we would have the fiscal note possibly prepared by finance for the weekend for us to review. That was kind of my thought.
What this does is allows you to see what the department head understands about the impact, the fiscal impact of that. We've gone through two sessions of this. I'm glad the staff initiated, that was our motivation to do this. We had some draw runs on it. What you're seeing is pretty much the same product. If the numbers are wrong, for example, the one thing that I've seen, staff correct me if I'm wrong, if they're doing the estimate on an event, maybe the staff will forget to put in the cost of benefits, for example. So you'd see a small adjustment there. What I've seen so far has not been any fundamental change. Right. And you get to see, the mayor did ask, not in the meeting here, but he did ask if he'd like to see the original from what's, the origin of the department head. So he, you all can see that in the final version, so you can justify those.
So the mayor, the mayor asked that this be done this way?
It's part of a conversation over.
Oh, okay.
It was a side conversation that wasn't directed at all. And I think this, what we're doing right now falls in line with the way the ordinance is written.
Yeah, the ordinance actually doesn't have the timeline in it. All we're saying, the ordinance, the fiscal note will be prepared by the responsible director and verified for accuracy by the, by the finance department.
Well, I think the only thing I would ask then is, if we're going to give the draft agenda on a Friday for review, that we have probably the vetting of the finance department in that fiscal note for the weekend, just because I think for us to have to be fully informed, if you will, I feel like with a Tuesday deadline, we're getting, we're basically getting the same amount of time that the public gets. The agenda's printed the next day, so if we don't see it until Tuesday, we don't have much time to ask questions.
I think that's an administrative matter that can just be worked out by the city manager and commissioners about what works best for you, but it doesn't, statute doesn't codify the timelines, and that's--
I think I would feel better if, and I fully understand that the department heads do have the opportunity to provide input. I don't have a problem with that at all. I just feel like the fiscal note, my intent when I asked for this to be conceived and prepared was that the fiscal note be prepared by the people that handle the fiscal matters and the finance department.
Yeah, but the department head has to have some say in the fiscal matter. But it's the department--
They can, and they can--
This has been on here since Friday.
They can go back and, well, but I want to discuss it in the meeting.
Okay.
This is when we discuss it. This is the time we discuss matters like this.
But I want to see both of them. I want to see the departments take, and I want to see finances. I want to see both of those.
I'm fine with the timeline the way that it is.
I do, too.
I think the intention right now is--
mainly because I'm not seeing a lot of change in what we get from the department head and what ends up in finance.
The intention is to help the finance department not be overworked, so that they can get a first draft, and many times it is just absolute crap, but they look at all of them, and when they need to make changes--
So the finance department gets it on Friday when we get it?
Yes.
Okay. They get it after, after you all get it, it's released. That's a staffing issue with graphics, just that there's not--
So the finance department has time to review it?
Right.
Yeah. Do they get it when we get it?
They get it immediately after you get it.
Okay.
So as soon as it sends to you all, that protects the director's input on it, so you can see that version of it. And then, like I said, I said it kind of mockingly. We have a lot of staff that works on weekends doing things.
Oh, sure, yeah.
They'll hit that on Saturday and Sunday or Monday. The real, the benefit for us as a staff and the benefit for me as your city manager is that on Tuesday in the staff call, after we've had a couple of days to look at that, reconcile things that sometimes go between the directors, is that we nug that out at the staff call on Tuesday. So, and just like last week, we have some changes to it to better make things short so that there's not unnecessary detail in there, and that's a collective effort. That's not just me saying that doesn't need to be in there, or a director, or a finance director. So I thought that was very valuable this week in the time when that was done.
And I expect you to tweak all this stuff out, but I, my thought again, just going back to it, was the fiscal note was so that we had the finance department independently verifying that what the staff has given to them is correct, and that way we can make the most informed decision. I think the back and forth between the department head and the finance department is totally informed. I don't necessarily think I need to see the department heads' version. I would just like to see the final act of both department heads and the finance department who've had time to talk to each other and make sure that they're both on the same page with the costs.
I guess I had a different idea about the fiscal note. In my opinion, in my thought, the fiscal note was for the public to see what we've always been able to see. We've had it in our agenda from day one, this is what it's going to cost us. The public hasn't ever had access to that. And the fiscal note, in my opinion, I love this, that on, on the agenda that the public And the fiscal note, in my opinion, I love this, that on, on the agenda that the public sees, you get to say, you get to see, this is how much it's going to cost the city, this is how much we budgeted, this is what we're over. We've always had that, that's always been in our agenda. It just hasn't been available to the public. So I'm, I'm not sure. Am I thinking that wrong?
No, I think, but I think your convention described is, if I understand your intent correctly, is what's happening. So, the person that's responsible for that budget, no doubt, is the department head. They're, they're the one who has to execute that. Now, any disconnects in the past event between what was budgeted, what it actually costs, where it comes from, exactly. And so you, and you've seen the bourbon John here, if you've read it today, there's, hey, it's going to be, to be determined on some of these because there's still a lot of time left in the year if I come from one account or like, or like emergency situations. Some are pretty clean where they come from. What I expect as a city manager and finance to support me, we've talked about this extensively, I expect the department heads to know their budget. When we go through the budget cycle in the spring, they brief that there to you all. They know what it is for training, all the other routine stuff and they should know on a, on a month-to-month basis, day-to-day basis where they're on the budget. So, we do have a fantastic finance department that knows down to any, obviously, the recognition, but our department heads also, and I'm not saying they don't do that, by the way, but they need to have that understanding of the budget. So it's a great exercise for us, to be honest with you. We did have the, basically the numbers in there in the past, this is causing us to hone those and say, okay, where, where exactly is that coming from? Does that make sense?
Back to your point, commission, the ultimate oversight is by the finance department. It's just taking the burden of the initial preparation off of them that ultimately they're looking at it and before anything goes out there, getting their stamp of approval or if they think there's additions or changes you made.
I certainly don't mind tweaking this in the future if it, if the finance department gets burned with, with short notice to try to come up with some research on stuff that the department hasn't given them, you know, and it's hashed out on a Tuesday. You know, what we have, we're obligated to the taxpayer ultimately. And I want to make sure that we have everything in front of us to make the best decision financially for our city. And the same reason I asked for our agendas on a Friday are the same reason I'm wanting to make sure we get all the information we can as early as we can because we owe that to the taxpayer. And I don't want to get information that could possibly be dramatically different on a Tuesday from something that I could have known on Friday so that we could have hammered down on Monday, Tuesday before Thursday for our meeting, that's all. Alright, with that being said, anybody else need to, want to make any comments? All in favor, any opposed?
Item E, second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky accepting the proposal of HDR Inc. to provide professional engineering and rate development services for a cost of service study of rates for both the water and sewer systems in an amount not to exceed $72,000 for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations.
Salute. We have a second, any comments? All in favor?
Item M, second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky accepting the proposal of LG, LJB Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the design and permitting of the replacement of water access in various areas of the city's distribution system in an amount not to exceed $206,000 for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations.
Salute.
Any comments? All in favor? All opposed?
Item G, second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Part 3, Conditions of Employment, Section C, Disciplinary Action of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Salute.
Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Item H, second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the job description for the position of city engineer as a replacement for the position of city engineer and capital program director in the Department of Engineering, eliminating the position of director of Public Services and Utility Operations in the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations, creating the Department of Utilities and adopting the job description for the position of director of utilities, creating the Department of Public Services and amending the authorized positions listing to reflect these changes to the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Salute.
Second. Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Item I, is first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section 14 of Ordinance Number 105, Series of 2000, as previously amended restricting animals within the city commonly known and referred to as the Animal Control Ordinance. And this is the first draft as tabled last week, or first.
They have a motion to consider?
Table ordinance, we have a lack of amendment.
So I think we're on to consent?
So a resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the present agenda for the regular reading of the Board of City Commissioners of March 14th, 2019.
Second.
Any comments? I do have a comment on item three, which is the recommendation of ordering a purchase of a new Ford halftime truck. My only question is, can we, you know, I don't buy anything without seeing it. And in this matter, I would prefer just to have even a photograph of any vehicles that we are asked to purchase or even just a comparable, I just, I can't imagine, I think it's our duty, even if it's standard procedure, that we see at least what we're buying.
Do I have that attached to the journal?
Yeah, you can put it, or even in, in our notes, just, just for procedural. And that, not just trucks too, I think any kind of equipment that somebody drives, I'd like to probably get a picture of that and maybe even a picture of what we're replacing so we know what we had versus what we're getting, just so we understand the need. I, I think, I feel better informed of them making those decisions then.
Would you like to see that during the budget cycle?
No, I think during, I think as it comes up, just, because I will remember, and I think it's probably important just to have whatever it is. Does anybody else think that that's, I mean, do you buy a car without looking at it?
Yeah, if somebody here has gone and looked at it and-
Oh, I don't, it's not that we don't, it's not that I don't trust the department, I think it's more of, it's just, again, it's, it's just-
I mean, they see it, I, I think they're workable, I mean, I mean, I don't think we've been duping anybody before.
No, I think, but I, I think the taxpayer would think that we would at least see a picture of it before we're authorizing a purchase of it.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine, alright. All in favor? Any opposed? Can you pass that? Want to do business?
New business, item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Boyd County Sanitary Landfill and Landfill for a suitable landfill location for the receipt and disposal of compacted garbage and refuse rubble and rubbish collected by the City of Ashland for a period of one year in an amount not to exceed $70.97 per ton for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations, Division of Sanitation.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section 14 of Ordinance Number 105, Series of 2000, as previously amended restricting animals within the city commonly known and referred to as the Animal Control Ordinance.
Salute.
Second. Any comments? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Any other new business? At this time, we're going to go into executive session for potential litigation in an individual personnel manner. Do we need a motion?
I don't like that.
Any second? All in favor? No action, we take it, all we need.